So then I'm going to reach out to Ron really quick, but. Then I'll get started. Okay, so I'm going to call to order the five o'clock work session of the planning board. It's Tuesday, October the 26th, a little bit after five. As far as the work session goes, we have Lawrence Freen and Neil Slevin, myself, Kate Lawson, the chair present. We also have the planning board's attorney, Elizabeth Vale. And then we have the consultant Kathy Iseman from Nelson Pope Voorhees on the Zoom call. Ron just texted me, he's having some internet issues, but I think we can go ahead and get started and then he can join us. We'll catch him up. So the first item on the work session is Stephen Loffler, applicant 152 Hampton Street. And we received an email today, Doris did, from Dennis Downs requesting to adjourn this matter from the work session. So I think we'll go ahead and adjourn it until it's put back on. So then the next item on the work session is 63 Page Main LLC. And that's in the secret review process, and I believe Tiffany Scarletto is on the Zoom for the applicant. Hi Tiffany. So that being said, I think probably the best way to start talking about this a little bit is maybe Kathy, could you just give us a quick update on where we are in the process, please?
Sure, so we have adopted lead agency status, I believe that was in December. And the applicant did agree to extend the timeframe under SECR, which would ordinarily require the adoption of a determination under SECR within 20 days of establishing lead agency. The part two, we had done a draft for discussion that was circulated that identified a number of resource areas that had a moderate to large, a potentially moderate to large impact that may occur from the result of the proposed action. To date, we've received a couple of items that, you know, may or may not mitigate some of the impacts that to the historic district specifically, but I can't actually weigh in on that. I don't feel comfortable weighing in on that. There was an analysis of the impacts to the historic jail that's located next door. And there was also a window analysis, which I didn't really quite understand the significance of that, and maybe, you know, we can get some narrative to accompany that. But there are, I'll just share my screen for a few seconds so you can see, Doris, if you can let me share my screen.
Sure, let me, I will let you share, hold on, please.
So this is, this is an application that requires Board of Appeals to grant a number of variances. But because it's a coordinated secret review, the Board of Appeals wouldn't be allowed to, wouldn't be permitted to make a decision on the zoning relief until the planning board makes a determination of significance under SECR. So there's like a little bit of a catch there where you need to have something happen under SECR before the zoning board can make a decision.
You're ready Kathy.
Okay. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
So I think Kathy, let's just kind of quickly go through the guesses.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we have
Talk to the board, okay.
The impact on land. In general, it's, you know, a change in the amount of development on the site.
So there's, right, there's an increase in the amount of development on the site. And that would
We've identified it as a small to no or small impact. The larger impacts are the ones that really need to be addressed are in the right-hand column. And again, this is the board's part two, and so this is, you know, just a draft for discussion that is subject to change.
Right, so then for under one impact on land, there is one that is checked yes, and that's regarding drainage infrastructure, infrastructure.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So that may be something that could be mitigated and applicant could easily provide that. But let's, let's hold off on discussion on that for now. And then if we go to the next, yes Kathy.
It is on page six, impact on aesthetics.
Right, and that was the contrast with existing aesthetics, architecture of surrounding buildings. So that one is where the applicant, I think Kathy mentioned they submitted a study of the jail and made comments about the condition of the jail and I think an offer to help improve the aesthetics of the jail as part of this, but I think I'm not clear on if that really addresses the overall potential impact on aesthetics and architecture as it relates to surrounding buildings. So that would be something I think the board would need to discuss a little bit in more detail.
And I think scale, a scale as well is probably comes into that.
The scale, which the applicant did provide that diagram, but again, I think we'll hold off on talking about that, but I just want to raise these, these are the issues, so we can start to think about them as the board looks at this. Then if you go to number 10 on the same page, is a similar comment to the aesthetic resources, it's impact on historic and archaeological resources. So I think that's something to keep in mind for the board. And then again, it was, there's another item checked on that, but it's the same concept. The visual elements of the, of the rent, of the proposed project. So we talked a little bit about that before, but we might want to revisit that. Then the next yes is under 13, impact on transportation. And we did discuss this as a board in detail. Traffic impacts related to events, because the idea is this is an event space. And so there's going to be, there's not only the peak traffic periods within the village, i.e. season, certain times of day, et cetera, but also that it's an event space, so when are those, you know, when are those events held? Do they you know, intercept with peak traffic periods? It's also, the back of the property backs up to Hampton Street, or is it Division? At that point, anyway, it's, it's a busy roadway. So that indicates some further, we, the board discussed it, but we might need to have some more discussion on that. And then
Parking as well, under transportation.
And parking. And then there was some other, other impacts, including energy, because it's proposed expansion, and then noise, odor and light. In addition, it's, it's in a proposed expansion, so those would be the items that there's also consistency with community plans. So that was on item 17 on page 10, and then consistency with community character. So creates potentially it does potentially displace some housing because of the request to convert the apartment to being part of the catering space use. And then the scale of the building. So those are all things that I think we need to decide now, do we want to as a board discuss those items a little further now? Because then the applicant, I guess, could have the chance to you know, try to address some of those concerns. So is that Kathy and Liz, should we, is that what we should do now, the board have a little discussion about some of those items, or what do you think?
I don't know if the applicant wants to address some of those items before the board starts making findings about them.
We would just ask that we be given an opportunity to make a submission that will cover all of those elements. I understand that the historic analysis was a little odd. I read it myself and I realized that the condition of the building is relevant to the analysis, but I understand what you mean, that we need to beef that up a little bit. And the, and the other things we are working on, we're working on the drainage. The transportation and parking, I guess is always an issue, and it's, I guess it's irking me now that parking is driving zoning. But we're all working on a way to try to figure out how to ameliorate, you know, some of the parking issues in town. And so we just asked for an opportunity to, if the board wants to discuss them, that's fine, we'd happy to take any feedback and take any of the, any comments back with us and try to address those as well, if any of the other board members have comments, so I'd encourage you to discuss it. And then we'd ask for it to be tabled so that we can make a submission that would try to address some of these issues before the board makes a determination.
Okay.
Tiffany, can you just state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Tiffany Scarletto, 45 Division Street, Sag Harbor for the applicant, 63 Main Street page.
Thank you Tiffany.
Okay, so I think referring back to prior meeting where the board talked about especially the parking and the traffic and there's really nowhere on site for deliveries. Is that something that's worth the applicant exploring to try to, you know, see if those revisions could help ameliorate or alleviate some of the transportation kind of demand issues? And then also, I guess, perhaps there's other, the other thing is as far as creating a more detailed drawing of the proposed building to how it relates to the neighboring buildings, to show that it, how it really could fit in to the, to this, you know, scale and historic qualities of some of those buildings, and I don't know if if any of the other board members want to comment on any of this.
I have, I have a couple of questions, Kay, and I think perhaps Liz might be able to shed some light on my questions. I, you know, this, this has been around now for a year, just about. And I don't really recall, but I take it since Kathy said we did, that we at some point declared ourselves lead agency on the secret process. Relative to the Board of Trustees' proposal, that there would be a notion that on occasion, it would be the proper place to do the SECR analysis at the Board of Trustee level rather than at the boards themselves, the volunteer boards. You can argue that both ways, but I think it's an argument that the community probably ought to have, and I'm wondering two things. One, is there any chance that we might launch ourselves into this only to have it changed in some way and responsibilities for SECR assumed by the Board of Trustees? That's the fundamental one, and if Liz, you know anything where Jim LaRocca's proposal to do that is, right now it'd be great.
Sure, this is just an application for 63 Main Street, which I don't believe is part of the moratorium, right Tiffany? And so therefore, it's not affected by the proposed legislation for the waterfront overlay district at all. And the Village Board of Trustees has no authority over this application with respect to the approvals that this applicant is seeking. Therefore, the Village Board of Trustees will never have any sort of secret review to do. There's no action it needs to take with respect to the application. And since it has no action to take and no approval authority over it, there's no review to be done by them at all with respect to this application.
All right, I'm going to try and pin you a little bit on this. Then my, then my understanding that there was this idea that at times, and I think by the way, that this issue of which came first, comes first, the chicken or the egg? We went through a really lengthy application with Harbor Heights several years ago. And at the end of the day, the board, our board was confronted with a very simple question. We never believed that the applicant was going to get all of the the variances that the plan in front of us for consideration was going to need. And yet we had to go through the whole process. Essentially having the community frustrated itself on our walls. And we knew all along that the, none of the issue was going to be any variances that might be required. So I thought that LaRocca's idea that at times the Board of Trustees is the proper venue might very well be in that sort of circumstance where essentially a lot of it has to do with the community's overall vision of itself and not simply the interpretation of the code or our local laws as they currently exist. So are you, are you saying to me that under no circumstances can the Board of Trustees assume the responsibility for doing secret reviews on any given application? Or are you saying on this
Say on this application, correct.
And that's because for the reasons that you stated outside the moratorium, blah, 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 okay. Okay, so this is ours and it's ours to keep.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I don't know if Larry or Neil, I don't know if Ronald got on the call yet. Have any, any comments for the applicant based on some of those potential impacts that Kathy and I just went through?
I do.
Okay.
When this was before us, in a substantive way, I don't, can't remember when it was, you know, lose track of time during this pandemic. But we had a rather, I'd call it a robust conversation with the applicant about the potential difficulties with having an event space which takes place, each event takes place over a certain limited period of time. And if there were in fact 80 guests or 60 guests, whatever the number was, there would be 20, 30 automobiles who needed to pull over and allow people to leave the vehicle. The vehicle would have to be parked someplace by someone. And on, this is on Route 114. And there is presently no, no possible space to pull over and pull in and be out of the way of the traffic on 114. And I'll leave it at that and say that we, we said as a board to the applicant that this was a major problem. And a significant fix has to be proposed to deal with this. That's what I remember.
Yeah. That, that comment I think makes a lot of sense, and I think assuming, you know, that everyone, you know, is listening, that hopefully the applicant can address that in a significant way. So that being said, I think at this point, I think Tiffany requested that they adjourn this for now until they can address some of these issues. Tiffany?
I was just going to say that we had submitted revised plans. I don't know if Kathy had an opportunity to review them, but that did change the entrance to the property from Division Street to the alleyway between Main and Division. And that would be utilized obviously in conjunction with the main entrance that currently exists. So those plans have been revised. I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to look at them.
When were those submitted Tiffany?
I'm going to say probably two months ago.
Okay.
You should have a packet of these.
I saw them today. I looked at them.
Is there any way, do you have that ability to share that Kathy? Okay, I think that would be helpful since we're all here.
Maybe that's not the correct one, hold on one second. Trying to figure out which sheet is the best one to show.
Hi, this is Ron. I just want to let you know I'm here, I'm just on the phone because I'm having internet issues at home, so. Hi Ron.
Hi Ron.
Hi, hi. I'm listening to all of this, and my only comment is the same thing about 114 and the offloading of people and cars for the new addition. Because right now we have, there's a major issue that we have on 114 with just basic deliveries of, you know, food product, you know, and when Val doors or ever shows up there, I'm, you know, every time I'm driving past there, I have to go around into the other lane because of the truck offloading issues back there, so. I can't imagine if we had valet parking, I don't know where all those people would go, so. I agree, we just need more, more information and more diagrams, see how that's going to really work.
Happy to provide a narrative to go along with that.
Do you, do you want to walk us through Tiffany, one of the exhibits in particular, I have the elevations.
Depends on which one of them you pull up.
Okay, that's up to you, I have all of them.
Okay, so I think this is probably a good one to start with. You'll see oh wait, this is, I think this is the old one Kathy. Because it's showing the Division Street Page Hall on Division Street. It might be easier to just explain, as I, I know that the board was concerned about an entrance and exit and, you know, all of the situations that go on in the back there, and the goal was to get rid of back page and get rid of an entrance and exit onto Division Street. So we took that into account, and there's already an existing doorway, probably all familiar with that, the doorway that already exists to the property that is, serves as a, almost an emergency exit at this point on the side of the building, and we would use that as the primary entrance for the event space rather than have something on Division Street. And just to touch on a little bit, and we'll get, I'll get into it in the narrative and our later submission, but you're not really going to see any changes in the amount of deliveries that go on on the property. Right now you have delivery trucks. And frankly, there's no place for them to park, there's no place for them to park for the American Hotel, there's no place for them to park for the beverage store, there's no place for them to park for the cheese shop, there's no place for them to park for Little Birdie, there's no place for them to park for Sen. There's no place to park for any of the deliveries that go on on the backside of Division Street, which just happens to be outside my office, so I do keep a pretty close eye on it. But you're not really going to see any substantial change in that, just because we're increasing the number of seats doesn't mean you're going to see an increase in the number of deliveries, they're still going to come from the same purveyors on the same day. And it's going, that, that interaction is going to remain exactly the same as it is today.
Okay.
So I'll get into it more in the narrative discussion, but.
Right. So at this point then, does it make sense to allow the applicant to adjourn it and then make sure that everyone reviews, that gets the revised plan, which I think we have, but we can't for some reason pull up right now? And, and then have that discussion as to whether that's, except, you know, that mitigation works or, or doesn't?
In my mind, we have a few more issues to address, so, you know, if the board wants to finish discussing all of these, we're going to have to address all of them.
Yeah.
And I'd rather
We're not going to have that, we don't have, we really don't have the the time right now to discuss them all, but I think the idea is that we understand the general concerns of the board. And the applicant has an idea of where to hopefully address those if they can. Okay, so.
I just, I would want to confirm that the plans that I had shown were stamped, received September 10th. Does that sound right this year?
Yes.
Okay. So you might want to just make sure that those are the most recent plans when you do the submission, they were, it looks like the revision date was August 12, 2021.
August 12th, okay, I'll just make sure that those are the correct ones.
Okay.
Okay. So then procedurally, we'll adjourn this, and then if the applicant wants to submit for the next meeting? Does that make sense? Okay. Liz, yeah, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so then, thanks Tiffany. The next item for the work session is also new business on the, the meeting. So I don't know if it makes sense to have, we could talk about, talk about that quickly now. So the next item is 37 John and 12 Henry Street. It's a proposed lot line modification. It's also on the regular meeting agenda. We is basically just a lot of my own modification, but I don't know if Kathy wants to comment on where that is right now.
Sure, so this is, this is the proposed lot line modification map. The property that's on the corner of John Street and Columbia Street is transferring an area here, known as Parcel A to this property, which is 12 West Henry Street, to increase the size of that property. Parcel one is the one on John Street and Columbia that would remain 20,000 square feet and conform to Suffolk County sanitary code as well as village minimum lot area requirements and would not result any, in any, in any new non-conformities. And the proposed transfer would increase the lot size of this property, Parcel two. This would still not meet the minimum area required to meet the gross floor area or what's on the property now, but it would increase its level of conformity. So at this point, I'm recommending that the board schedule a public hearing and also authorize us to do referrals to Suffolk County Planning Commission as well as to the Harbor Committee for coastal consistency.
Okay, so then we would, we'll do those things and we'll talk, we'll, we'll vote on that in the regular meeting in a few minutes. So for now, we're going to move on to item four. Bay Partners, Six Havens Lane. And the applicant, I think Brian DeSessa is on for the applicant. Is Brian on? I know there was some correspondence with the applicant, I don't know if that's was Jonas who's on the call? was Jonas who's on the call?
No, let me look it up. I know there was a request from the owner.
Right.
To bring it back for discussion. Doris, do you remember who had asked for?
Yeah, there was an email, I thought.
Oh, it's from Eddie.
Something's going on with your microphone. I'm not sure if it's just me.
Yeah.
It's not just you.
It's very loud, so I don't know if it's that headset you have on, Doris, or maybe you could move it a little bit away from your mouth.
Okay.
That's good.
Is that better?
Yes.
Well, if there is somebody here, Ed Corcoran, who had asked for this meeting. Raise your hand. I guess otherwise, there's no need to speak about it. The idea.
No one's on them. That's why I thought it wasn't supposed to be on, but I, I was, turns out maybe I was right. Which happens on occasion, so for now, we're gonna adjourn that and not discuss it. So with that being said, I'd like to get started with the regular meeting. So if we could stand and do the Pudge of Allegiance? Okay. If Doris wants to post the flag, then. I'll just, I'll just go ahead and start. A pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation Thanks, everyone. We're rolling in to our regular meeting. I think I saw Ronald Reed was able to get on via Zoom. We have, you know, everyone, enough people present. So with that being said, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. And if I could get a motion to approve the minutes taken on June 22, 2021, please.
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Second. Okay, Ronald Reed seconding. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So carried. Okay. New business. This is that 37 John Street and 12 Henry Street lot line modification that we just talked about. So that being said, Kathy just mentioned that what needs to be done is we need to authorize her to do the appropriate referrals, including, I think, the Harbor Committee, correct Kathy?
Yes.
And then is it the health, county health?
Suffolk County.
Right? So any others, Kathy?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so with that being said, then do we just need a motion to authorize Kathy to make those referrals? Could I get a motion?
I move it.
Okay, in a second.
A second, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
Hi, and also you're scheduling a public hearing, correct?
Yep.
So I have the next meeting is November 23rd.
Right, so then we would set that set the public hearing for the next meeting. Anything else we need to do, Liz, that I'm missing?
No.
No, okay, so just a motion to set that for the next meeting, please.
If someone.
In a second.
I could.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, so we'll set that for the next meeting. And we'll get the referrals out. Okay.
Thank you.
So there's some correspondence requiring action. We discussed this over the last, I guess it's been a year maybe, or maybe longer. There's a current moratorium in place on site plan approvals in the waterfront area that was extended by Suffolk County for another six months to allow more time for the village to review the recommendations of the waterfront committee. Currently, there was, there was drafts and I think it was put on the site you know, several months ago. Since that the current village leadership has made some changes to those proposed amended amendments to the zoning laws for the village. I think we all received a copy of those those proposed changes. And the planning board needs to you know, maybe discuss a little and if we need to make any comments regarding these local law recommendations. So that being said, I don't know if, if it's appropriate for Liz to comment on some of those changes from the last time around, Kathy? Liz?
Fine, sure, so there's a new local law that hopefully you'll, you'll feel comfortable giving a feedback on. The local law has two main sections. The first section is to establish the waterfront overlay district. And it expands the district to include a greater area of the coastline, the actual coastline, which is shown on the map, the revised map that Kathy's office prepared. And it's also available on the website. I hope you had a chance to review that. So we're first establishing, amending the zoning code to establish the waterfront overlay district as an additional district in the, in the code. And then the amendment goes on to create waterfront overlay district standards that will be applied. And first, talks about creating a special permit or special exception use permit for buildings and structures that are over 3,500 square feet in gross floor area within the waterfront overlay district. And then it also goes on to create specific standards for the waterfront overlay district itself. And so the standards are, a lot of them are taken from the prior version of the local law, of the draft law from the Form-based code. And if you look through, some of the standards are similar, restricting the height, setbacks, restricting accessory structures, emphasizing waterfront visual access, floodproofing, mechanical equipment, refuse areas, and also limiting residential uses. Residential uses shall not be permitted on the waterfront properties within the VB or OD districts in the waterfront overlay district. And then also compliance with the sewer code. Then it goes on to create a new section, which is to create a special exception use permit for those structures that are greater than 3,500 square feet in gross floor area in the waterfront overlay district, which would be reviewed by the Village Board of Trustees instead of the planning board. Your code significantly already has a section where a special permit review is conducted by the Village Board of Trustees. That section is the cell tower section. All special exception use permits for cell towers gets reviewed by the Board of Trustees in addition to site plan by your board. So this would be similar to that. And it also suggests standards that the Village Board of Trustees will have to apply to applications that come before it, and those standards are set forth in, in the code. I could just briefly touch upon some of those. Whether the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan with the waterfront overlay district standards, whether the design scale and appearance are compatible, whether the lot area is sufficient, whether there's, the applicant demonstrates a need for a building or building complex larger than 3,500 square feet, traffic, submission of a traffic analysis, which determines that the roads support the development, whether adequate parking is provided, and submission of a parking plan, whether the building's site designs onsite activities are consistent with the noise chapter, whether there's a sufficient transitional side and rear buffers, principal setback, structures setbacks, and then maximum height section, sign compliance, and then also waste management plan section. And that's the, a general overview. I'm hoping you all had received copies or watched the Village Board meeting and got a more thorough and depth review. And I just recommend that you, you know, make your comments and decide what to tell the Village Board of Trustees, and then maybe we can reduce it to a resolution, and then next month, at the next meeting, you could all vote on it and send it to the board.
Quick question on that, Liz, since the public hearing is, is it the ninth, November 9? Is the public hearing the trustees are holding on that?
Yeah.
And then do they hold that open for 30 days?
I mean, they can. They certainly should hold it open until they hear back from you, so.
As well as Suffolk County Planning Commission, which.
Yeah, they have to hear from a lot of referral agencies, not just you, so.
So I'm just thinking.
There's time, there's time.
So we can, here's, so potentially, we could talk about it a little bit now. Then reflect if people want to do additional research based on the materials that is available. And then the next meeting, we could adopt a resolution?
With your comments, yes.
Comments. Okay. So then I think it makes sense to talk a little bit about it now as a board. I think I'll just share my input first, and then we'll hear from everyone else who wants to comment on the board is that the process, there was a big process we went through to come up with solutions and ideas about how to address the kind of urgent issue of waterfront redevelopment in the village that, that original plan and process has been changed, but the the spirit and essence of what seemed very important are still here, and that was to maintain visual and public access to the waterfront and also keep the uses as quote unquote, public uses, so restaurants, retail, office, et cetera, where appropriate, not private residential uses. Those are achieved by this version of the local law amendments. And also the, you know, I think those are the main things that, that remain from the original version that I think are very, you know, good for the village. Kind of simplifying that, but the area was expanded. But again, some of those changes only apply to the office district or the business, village business district. They wouldn't apply to some of those other areas, even though that becomes part of the waterfront overlay. So those are sort of my, my 36,000 feet comments, and I don't know if anyone, anyone on the board has questions for Liz or for Kathy and wants to talk about anything else.
I have a question, and I read over everything and looked at all the maps, and I understand that the overlay district was virtually tripled in size in acreage. And it had moved to include virtually everything, including Core Maria. And which can, you know, on the surface of it is a, I think, a good, a good thing. But my question is, what can actually be done? It was referenced in the narrative, but what could actually be done about, that's a residentially zoned piece of property. What can the village actually do to reduce the worst case scenario from happening? Do we know?
Well, it would be, it would be unrelated and almost an additional study that would need to occur for the Core Maria property. As a historic property, as one of the largest underdeveloped properties in the R20 zone, has, and a pre-existing non-conforming use, it has, you know, potential for change, so it would need to be looked at separately.
I'll just make a stab in the dark comment on it. Community preservation funds. And I'll leave it at that.
Would you, would you recommend further study of that property to the Village Board to have them study it further?
I, I think it's, I think it's critical because it's the largest, as we just mentioned, it's the largest undeveloped residential piece of property in the village, I believe, at this point in time, and it's also waterfront property. And I realize it's a complex situation, it's expensive situation, but I think that it needs to be looked at to try to see if the village could in some way mitigate the worst case scenario and actually create something good out of it. Now, a good out, a better outcome. And so I think it's, it's one of the important things, components of this.
Thanks, Larry. Any, anyone else have any questions or comments or items they want to talk about with regard to this?
And I, unlike Larry, did not read that material. My question relates to the topic that we had on the table before about parking and so on. Does the, does the proposed change have an impact in any way on the current village parking strategy? Is there, is there anything that's going to impact the waterfront district or any other area that is not part of the waterfront district or the waterfront overlay district relative to parking, or are we still going to be operating under the same you know, rules that we were operating under?
So, same roles. I mean, there is an additional there is additional language for larger projects built into the special exception that there needs to be a parking plan provided as part of the application for the Board of Trustees to review that. Which is a good thing, that they think this stuff through, but no, the same standards would apply as are in the code now.
Correct.
They'd still need, applicants would still need to get a variance for parking when, when the building, when the, when the parking onsite isn't sufficient for the size of the building. That doesn't change. But the one thing that does change is this layer of review by the trustees and the mayor. Or is it just the trustees?
It's the Village Board of Trustees as a, as a board, which includes the mayor.
Right.
But we're still in the same situation that we have been in. There isn't any room for parking. And every project that comes along is going to grapple with and come up with a parking plan that's not adequate for the property that's being developed. And so it goes to the ZBA for a variance.
Correct.
So.
And these, this legislation, if I may, really only addresses the waterfront, right? So it's the waterfront overlay district.
Right.
Parking regulations would affect the entire village.
True, this is just that overlay. But so the, the, there was like a, through the process of, through the committee's process, and from my understanding from the, some of the the meetings I've listened to, there wasn't a desire to get rid of the current parking variance system because it does limit the size of projects. There was more of an interest in adding another layer of input and review by the, by the village in general and including including the planning board about how to address some of those issues in the context of when those variances are granted, because some of them are, they might not all be granted as a matter of course, but some of those parking variances are. And how is the applicant going to address those in a significant way? Um, you know, if that can be done.
I, I would, I would make a comment, uh, not to beat this dead horse, but. Uh, a project that was proposed, uh. Recently in the last two years, that is the Scuvoni rebuild.
I don't think we should necessarily, Liz, should we necessarily comment on specific projects?
Exactly, yeah. Particularly applications that will come before this board.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I, without putting words in your mouth, Larry. Um, I think I, the, the problem is real. The problem is real.
Yes.
Um, parking problem in the village is real. Um, I think that. No matter how you, um. Kind of try to slice the pie, there's only so much pie to go around. Um, and that the land is so valuable that people want to maximize any redevelopment. We only have so many tools in our toolbox. One of them was variances. Now there is arguably another tool. Um, for some of these projects, um, to work with the leadership in the village to come up with some alternative solutions. But it's still, there is still this over, you know, overarching issue. And this is not, uh, this isn't, um, it's, it's another tool, it's not a fix. Would, would be, I, what, what I'm hea- and I hear that from you.
Yep.
Um, Larry, I don't know if you have any other non-applicant specific comments about parking here?
I'll make a general comment. Uh, another layer of overview. Uh. May not actually result in any different outcome. Uh, just another layer of overview and, you know, I understand the, the. Desire and the impetus for, for take, trying to take responsibility for it, but the, the problem is. Is what it is. And it's not going to change because of another layer of overview.
Right. Um, duly noted. Um, I don't know if, Ronald, if you have anything you want to talk about or ask about?
Well, I'll, I'll throw my two cents in on this. I'll start with the 60,000 view. And I, I was happy to see that the, the area was expanded. To cover some of those areas that were con- of concern. Um. There's still the issue about, you know, uh, Core Maria with the residential area, but I, I was glad it was, um, included. And I liked Larry's comment on the, on the use of, uh, preservation funds. Uh, for poss- the possible. Down the road somewhere as a discussion. Uh, I haven't, I haven't really had a chance to digest some of the other, uh. Intricacies of the, the proposal, uh, as far as use groups, um. That I'm glad we have an extended period, so I want to really dig into that because I know as being part of that committee, we talked a lot about different use groups and. What to go in there and not, and I know.
Briefly interrupt you, Ron, that's one of the major changes in this. Is that that use table was removed, um, from the, from the.
Yeah, completely.
Yes. Um.
Yeah.
And the only use change or the only change that remains is that residential will not be permitted on the waterfront. In those, in the subset, office and village business districts within the overlay. So, I, I mean. Um, that's sort of is what it is. That was, the decision was made to remove that use table and remove the form, form-based part of this. Um, you know, these changes.
Yeah, which, which I'll just comment is unfortunate from my perspective, but, um, it is what it is.
Right.
At this point. Um, we can deal with that down the road, but I, you know, um. I think otherwise we're, it's, it is what it is and I don't, I don't have a lot of comment on, you know, where it is currently. Uh, but, um. We do have to deal at s- at some point with, you know, like we discussed in the parking issue, which is a major, major, uh, elephant in our room. And, uh, go from there. So otherwise, I, I mean, it got so watered down that I don't have a lot, a lot of comments on where it is today, but. I was just glad that the area got expanded.
Okay. Um, so my thought would be. Um, if anyone wants to take a look more closely based on, and in light of what we just discussed. And, and if there's any really specific comments. Um. That might be helpful in going back to the board. Um, otherwise. You know, it sounds like the expansion of the zone, people on the board. Um, seem to a- approve of, um, if, if informally. And the other thing that's an improvement, um, over the prior code. Is that, um, you know, there's, there's this focus on visual and pedestrian access. And continued public access to those waterfront, key waterfront parcels. Um, so that being said, um. I think we can all kind of think about this a little more and then. If, if we want to come up with some specific comments and have a resolution, um. Uh, at the next meeting, we could do that then. Um, does that sound good?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Liz, yes?
Yes.
Is, is someone, um. Able to be responsible for summarizing? What was the comments were today and presenting them back to us again?
Yes.
A month from now and, uh, saying, is this what you mean? Is this the message that you want to send?
I, I took, I took some notes. I can, um, I can summarize what I heard and I can circulate that and I can add to it and, uh, for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Good plan. All right, um, so that completes the agenda on the meeting. Um, and Doris said the next meeting's the 23rd. Is that correct, Doris? Of November? Yeah, right? Okay, so I'll, we'll see everyone, uh, the 23rd. Um, and with that in mind, um, if I could get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, well, thank you all for your time. I appreciate, and your comments, and we'll see you soon.
Good to see you, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.